All right, welcome, everybody. This is October 17th, 2019. It's the meeting of the North Hampton City Council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell, I'm council president, so I'll be running the meeting. And the meeting is being audio and video recorded. So let's start with public comment. I have two people signed up, and afterwards, anyone who hasn't signed up, you can still talk. So, excuse me if I say your name incorrectly, but Megan Paek? If you would, well, say whatever you want. Welcome.
It's fine.
You're fine, you can leave that. We're picking you up. Yep.
I'm a member of the Immigration and Immigrants Commission, but I'm here today as a member of North Hampton to add my voice to support for the passage of the Safe City Ordinance. Let me begin by identifying that these ordinance itself will not catalyze immigrants and us vulnerable capable to report the discrimination and abuse that they face upon and across the country that they are committed to understand and address. But taken in full number, what changes on a general level and more downshift in raising cost relations among many other things, we're just hoping to be truly safe for many immigrants. I speak as an immigrant to America at age six, who became an American in early adulthood during my dozen-plus years of entrepreneurship. Our interactions with authority figures were often officious and terrifying. I'm terrified of lost personal information when I needed jobs. After cutting my chin open, a beloved teacher divided me not to apply to college or live out of state until I was legal. We had little cash to spare, but we always had $200 on hand to contribute to a police help fund that a uniformed officer would readily pull up in our apartments. As much as we appreciated our newfound access to public schools, social services, hospitals, and enforcement, the fear of imperiling our chance of citizenship undermined many of our choices and opportunities. Like the undocumented immigrants that the Safe City Ordinance seeks to protect, my family had come to the country with little financial education and resources. For a long time, our lives were characterized more by struggle than by stimuli. It was immaterial to us, it was probably the smallest part of the planet that was one for security. But we constantly dreaded to report to INS for payment of late, or just for setting off a King Heart line to make ends. We're living in a town that the Safe City Ordinance has made difference to our public life and perceived sense of safety? Perhaps because it is a valid recognition of immigrants' role in this. In this era, not unprecedented, but certainly heightened danger for many minorities, including non-Americans, we clearly need to codify too often that we need to manage the level of awareness. But candidly, I hope that passage of this ordinance will help ordinary citizens more themselves with relative power-proof which can secury to enact and implement these policies in a rightful way. Many who are currently alive are already back at the teller's window. I'm delighted to share your time, skills, funds, salary to improve the welfare of new immigrants. We take life center training and offer a special culture and causes for immigrants to adopt change. We make decisions consciously or not, certainly percatiously, to be advocates for those around us who live with low security. We should pass a Safe City Ordinance that acknowledged that it is only one of many small but meaningful local actions. Remember that is what happens on community and individual level. The discretionary acts of human kindnesses and gestures and inclusion and acceptance that really manifest our love and builds a sense of safety and trust in our community for immigrants in defense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For those eloquent comments. Alex Jarrett.
Alex Jarrett, High Street Farms. I want to speak in favor of the Safety Ordinance. I believe our immigration system at present is deeply flawed, and people who come here are often from countries where our foreign policy has made it unsafe or damaged the economy. We live in a society where products have more freedom of movement than people. And if undocumented people fear dealing with our local government, then that makes it less safe for everyone, safe to report crimes and participate in community government. I want my friends who are undocumented to be as safe as we can make it here, for them to feel that, you know, me as a city are supporting them, and that they feel safe in talking to anyone in city government. And so, I urge you to pass the Safe City Amendment. I also wanted to talk about a different issue. I'm running for office, and as I'm going door-to-door, an issue that a lot of people talk about is traffic safety. And I wanted to make the connection between traffic calming and road repair. So, someone called me from, what is it, St. Florence Road, and to speak about the many very heavy trucks that are speeding down Florence Road. And the issue is that not only is there a safety concern with, of course, any vehicle speeding, but there's also that speed and weight are major factors in road damage. It's exponentially higher, you know, heavyweight vehicle going faster than, you know, a car going at a regular speed. And so, when we think about the funds that we're thinking about, you know, allocating for various things, we need to think about, well, slowing down, especially trucks, is going to actually save us money on the roads as well. So, just wanted to make that connection. It's something that, you know, people around the city are, really, it's on their minds. And, thanks, folks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any subject? So, please, you come, you. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. I know a few of you from my past lives. Here as a teacher in North Hampton, and it's a wonderful place to live and work. However, I do want to talk about something that is very near and dear, because it has to do with a very recent understanding and change to the way we commute in an analog city. It's a wonderful thing with our new Amtrak service. I hope many of you have either thought about it or have been on it, but it is a terrific new endeavor, and it's growing in the city beautifully. And in fact, if anything, they say that a depot should be the gateway. People are coming here, and they're seeing the city for the first time. And when you come off your train, or where you're arriving, you're impressed, hopefully. So, we do take the train, my partner and I do take the train on a monthly basis. We've been taking the train since we moved up here back in 2003, out in the Amherst area. But recently, over the last few years, we have been having to rely on the train for medical purposes. My partner and I go down every month, and it is very important to us that we have access, easy access, to the train. And ugly, we haven't had easy access, just recently, as a matter of fact. So, I understand that the city here has gone into a contract or an understanding with the owners, the private owners of that lot. To us, we thought it was a public lot, but it isn't. So, it is privately owned, and they've made some changes. They've only given us 15 minutes to load and unload, which is impossible, because not only in the 15 minutes you have people with issues getting in and out of the car, we haven't even dealt with the weather yet, but you also have a train that is notoriously late. Today, at 2:40, 2, the train arrived, and it was supposed to be there at 2:01. I think in my five years of travel, it only has arrived on time maybe once or twice. And now with the Valley Flyer, it has a great capability to getting people down to New York and back, or down to their jobs, maybe along the way, and back the same day. It's magnificent, really. So, please, use it. However, you only have 15 minutes to get in and out of there before you get charged. And we've never had that before. So, I'm just asking that if you're thinking about changing any ordinances or contractual agreements with these people, and I'm sure they're wonderful people, they want to grow the city too, and entertain, and, you know, support business, it's great, but give us a little bit of flexibility there. That toll gate is something that I've never seen before in this town. We have a toll gate that lets us in and out, but in only, in the garage, but it's an hour. Here, it's only 15 minutes. You can't, I saw today, people were blocking, they didn't want to go in to lock. So they were blocking the rest of the traffic. So if anybody has any questions, I did send my earlier presentation to Mr. Nash and his commission, and I got a wonderful note back saying that they were going to look into some of these items I mentioned. 20,000 riders this year so far on the Amtrak. And that's going to grow. That's going to grow the city, and all the cities along the line. It's a marvelous thing. I hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. And it's a good example, because we have this plain rule where we don't engage, go back and forth.
Right.
So, we're not the city council. It's our rules. But we should do, you should do what she has done, which is talk to your counselor individually. So, that's good. We have the Chair of the Transportation and Park and Commission talking with you.
Yes.
Good. So having said that, is there anyone else? Yep. Sir, come on up. You give your name, and you don't have to give your full address, but town you live in.
Jackson, Volcano, and I live at Burt's Pitt Road, right across from the Dog Farm. I'm here to advocate in favor of the Safe City Ordinance, for all the reasons that the first two speakers gave, and also some more. I've been working on this issue, as some of you know, for quite some time, back to 2010 and 2011, when communities found themselves voluntarily assisting, sometimes accidentally, assisting the federal government with the historically increased scrutiny of undocumented immigrants. I was happy to work to see Springfield take the lead on the issue, and then that happened here in North Hampton, that particularly the city council passed a resolution expressing the desire to not take on that work of the federal government. That resolution here in North Hampton was followed up with an executive order, which was among the first in western Massachusetts, in which directs the chief police department to take certain steps. Now, about five years later, we find ourselves in an even more divisive climate. Cities, and now entire states, in the case of Washington and California, have been codifying their desire to not voluntarily do the bidding of, in this case, the Trump administration. This has taken the form of state legislation, and in Massachusetts, ordinances and bylaws that establish that municipalities will not expend their resources doing something that is exclusively the role of the federal government. The Resistance Center, of which I belong, along with the Immigrant Protection Project, have been working from Springfield to Greenfield, from Amherst to East Hampton, and a couple more places, to codify that in those communities. It's no longer sufficient to merely direct a singular department or personnel to respond in a certain way. It is time, for many reasons, for municipalities and states as a whole to codify and put into policy their intention to retain their own resources, our own resources, for our own important and impressing needs, not for attacking the most vulnerable among us. North Hampton won't be the first in this case, but I'm sure it won't be the last, and the passage of this ordinance will put our city in line with what's becoming a consensus of civility among people of goodwill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on any subject? Come on, you don't look like a shy bunch to me. No? Okay. Anyone like my tie? Don't like my tie? Someone angry about national politics? Like you have a barking dog near your house? There's always next time. So thank you very much. Hearing no other public comment, we will convene. Let's ask for a roll of council.
Here.
President.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor LeBarge.
President.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Counselor Sharr.
Here.
So, we're all here. And the first thing I will do is announce public hearings to consider laying out portions of Finn Street and North Street. Pursuant Mass General Law Chapter 82, Section 21, the City Council Committee on City Services will hold public hearings here in the City Council chambers on Monday, November 4th, 2019, at 4:30 PM and 4:35 PM respectively, to consider laying out portions of the following public ways. Finn Street, from Prospect Street to King Street, and North Street, from King Street to Market Street. Any person interested or wishing to be heard thereon should appear at the time and place designated. Next is another announcement of a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2020 tax levy. The North Hampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 7th, 2019, at 7:05 in the City Council chambers, 212 Main Street, North Hampton, Mass, to discuss the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property within the city of North Hampton for fiscal year 2020, in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Mass General Laws. Information regarding this issue will be available for public instruction in the city clerk's office on or before November 5th, 2019, after 12:00 PM. Okay, so that's something that we do every year, ratio of, you know, among other things, residential commercial tax rate, which is now one. The ratio is one now. So, updates from me. So I have an announcement regarding the executive session minutes. The Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 22, requires public bodies to regularly review minutes of executive sessions. Council President Me has determined that since all the fiscal year 2016 through fiscal year 2019, and fiscal 2020 through fiscal 22 contracts, meaning collective bargaining contracts, have been settled, executive session minutes, February 21st, 2019, March 21st, 2019, June 5th, 2019, and August 15th, 2019, may now be released. I just did that, I just released them by doing that. However, due to pending litigation, continued nondisclosure, to the opposite, of executive session minutes for the following meetings, November 16th, 2017, and September 19th, 2019, are still warranted. So the law says I have to make that announcement periodically. So that takes care of me. Anyone else have announcements? Counselor Dwight, then Counselor LeBarge.
Providing an update on the Charter Review Committee meeting that we had this last Tuesday. We are wrapping things up. There is the final report at draft stage, and that was principally the focus of discussion. There was public comment to the effect that calling for a consideration of allowing people with protective status or undocumented residents who would not otherwise qualify for the right to vote, there was an appeal for a consideration of that, and there was some discussion further. Probably more expansive conversation on that point at our next meeting, which is actually, we're inviting members of the public who have yet to participate or even follow what we're discussing, at Jackson Street School in the gymnasium, I'm sorry, at 6:30 on October 29th, and hoping that people will be there who have not been able to participate so far in this conversation. And then, of course, and then we were working on editing a letter of summary that is going to be referred to the mayor, talking about other issues that came up that weren't necessarily germane to the charter, that didn't reach the threshold of charter-proposed changes. And one of them being, of course, the conversation that I mentioned last time, which was accessibility, information accessibility, and how to improve and enhance it. Everyone acknowledged that the information is available, but not everyone feels particularly comfortable or capable of locating that information, so that was our recommendation to the mayor. And that was it.
So the date on that is the 29th?
The 29th.
It's Tuesday.
October 29th, it's a Tuesday.
JF, Jackson Street, excuse me.
There will be translators available as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So Counselor LeBarge.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the Director of the Department of Public Works, and all my residents who worked very tirelessly with me to make Purspitt Road and Glendale Road a road that you can drive safely on. And mayor, thank you. Thank you for the many site visits with me on Purspitt Road and Glendale Road. And I can't tell you how many calls have come to my home, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nash, and then Counselor Bidwell.
Yeah, just a quick announcement. The committee, your select committee on pesticide reduction, will be meeting on, we're holding another hearing on Monday here at 10 o'clock. The public is welcome to come and provide us any input on the topic, and it's also being publicized as a council meeting, so any of our, my colleagues here are welcome to show up. And we are, we have November 10th, our deadline firmly focused on, and we will have a report to you.
Thank you. And what's the name, the acronym for your committee again?
Skipper.
Excuse me?
Skipper.
I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Skipper.
Oh, that's, that's actually good. So, we look forward to that. We had Counselor Bidwell.
Yes. Want to be sure folks knew that the Daily Hampshire Gazette is sponsoring a forum next week. They're calling it "The Future of Downtown North Hampton." It's a follow-up to their series of articles on the state of downtown. And it will be this coming Wednesday, October 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Click Workspace, 9 and 1/2 Market Street, so I would encourage anyone interested in joining a conversation about downtown to be there.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements from councilors? Counselor Klein.
I wanted to let people know that Friends of North Hampton Trails and Tree North Hampton are sponsoring on Sunday, October 20th, so this coming Sunday, the Great Tree Bike Tour. There's a route, an eight-mile route, and it features all of the great trees of North Hampton. You get an audio recording, and you listen to stories at each stop about the city's notable trees, including three champion trees, which means that they're the largest of their species in Massachusetts. You have to register by Saturday night at midnight. It's $15, and you can find more information on Friends of North Hampton Trails website.
Thank you very much, Counselor Klein. Any other announcements? Big sales, planning, charrettes? Nothing? Okay, good. So, now we have, oh, actually, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for us?
You don't.
You don't? Okay. So, blah, blah, blah. So now, the Consent Agenda contains the following items. At the request of anyone, counsel, I will remove an item for a separate vote, otherwise it's a debate on the consent agenda, which contains minutes of October 3rd, 2019. The question of appointments of various committees. All of the following have received positive recommendations from City Services. And the first two, well, here's all I'll do. To the Trust Fund Committee, Catherine Foot Newman, 697 Bridge Road, North Hampton, for a term starting July 2019, which is in the past, through June 2022. Okay. To the Housing Partnership, Reverend Todd Weir, 124 Moser Street, North Hampton, for the same term. That's the Housing Partnership. To the Parks and Recreation Committee, Catherine Elliott, excuse me, Kathleen Elliott, of 39A Florence Street in Leeds, for a term October 2019 through June 2021. To the Planning Board, Alan Versen, 508 Kennedy Road, Leeds, for a term October 2019 to June 2022. I will remove that one for a separate vote. Also to the Planning Board, David Whitehill, 60 Washington Avenue, North Hampton, for a term October 2019 through 2021. He is for an associate member. Mr. Versen is for a full member.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Okay. Second to that, all those in favor of the consent agenda?
Excuse me.
Yes.
I need to abstain on the Trust Fund Committee, Catherine Foot Newman.
I see. Thank you. So what we will do is remove that one.
Okay.
Minus the two removals.
There are two removals now. I should have been, I'm proceeding to, any other removals, or just to double-check? Okay, good. So, with those two off, we had a motion made and seconded?
Yes.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So we'll do it in order. So, is there a motion to approve the appointment of Catherine Foot Newman to the Trust Fund Committee?
So moved.
Any discussion on this? Okay. This can be done with a voice vote. So all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
And one abstention from Counselor LeBarge. Okay. Is, do I hear a motion to appoint Alan, to approve the appointment of Alan Versen to the Planning Board as a full member?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this? My position is the same as it was the last time we voted on this, which is a matter of public record, and I don't want to relitigate it, because last time I lost seven to two, so, but my position is the same, so. No interest in really getting into, I'm going to vote in the negative. Any further discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. Any abstentions? Okay, so that is approved. Now, we recess for finance.
Excellent. Laura, would you call our roll, please?
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
President.
President.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item is approval of the minutes of October 3rd. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then, the big item tonight is our first quarter financial report, from Finance Director Susan Wright.
You all should have gotten short reports for me. The first one is the revenue for the general fund, and they are all, this is the first quarter, so it's not a whole lot here, but everything is tracking exactly the way we thought. I will note that hotel motel taxes up about 2.5%. It could be in part to the new Airbnb tax, but we don't know, because they're giving us the money all along together, so we really don't know how much of that is new, picking up new revenue there. The adult-use marijuana excise for the first quarter is in as well, and you'll see it on the line just below hotel motel and meals. The parking revenue is, as we expect, it looks pretty robust. And there really isn't anything else in here that I would call your attention to. Everything's pretty much tracking the way that we would think at the end of the first quarter. In terms of the general fund expenses, that is a longer report, and again, if you look, the percentages are somewhat of a guide, but not all of them, because there are some departments that pay a lot of things upfront at the beginning of the fiscal year, so I wouldn't get too wrapped up in the percentages. But I do look at the salary percentages at this point, figure out how many payrolls have gone by, and where we should be at salary, or everybody's right should be, or perhaps a little bit below, because there may be some vacancies in that department. So there's nothing really to call your attention to there. Then the other two reports are the revenues and the expenditures for the corporate enterprise funds. And again, the revenues, all of the funds are between 24 and 26% for revenue, so that's all as we would expect. And then, the expenditures for the enterprise funds are, again, as we expect, the percentages are a little low, because there are a lot of encumbered funds that come over for some of the larger projects in the enterprise funds. So that's why some of the percentages of use may seem a little low, that those projects would be proceeding. So are there any questions on those?
Counselor Bidwell.
You mentioned on hotel motel that the Airbnb revenues are all lumped in together. Well, is there any prospect of that being separated out? Because it'd be very, very helpful to be able to look at them individually.
We've been looking to DOR about it, and it's been a conversation that we had, pushed it up through MMA as well. And so, at this point, it's because it's literally collected under the, basically, the way it was created, or by adding this as a new category of hotel motel. But we have stressed to them that it would be very helpful for us to be able to tease it out. But at this point, this is what we have right now, but we have definitely, my office has expressed it to them, and I know it's something we brought to MMA as well. The other piece of it is, you know, the state does have to MMA as well. The other piece of it is, you know, the state does have their own sort of registration data. But that still make it hard to figure that out, because you don't know. It doesn't register, but it doesn't tell you how much, how much occupancy you've had. So, yes, noted, and we've been a little frustrated by it. But we're working on that.
Do we have access to that registry at this point?
At this point, it would be through the Department of Revenue. And we haven't, we actually have had registrations locally. We have had people that have been registering locally, as we've been requiring them to. But again, it's, you can't draw a correlation between the revenue, or, you know, it's hard to figure out what the percentage of the revenue would be. But, but that is a frustration that we have in terms of isolating.
Okay, there you go.
Any other questions for the Finance Director? I'm hearing none, and a motion to accept her report.
Move to me.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we have some financial orders. The first one is 19151, "In Order to Authorize Payment of a Prior Year Bill." Order that the council authorizes the payment of a $1,885.22 prior year bill for FY 19 for the Parking Maintenance Division to Park Tech. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
And any extra information on this one you can give us?
This is for the rolls of tape.
And the machines?
Yes.
Any questions on the rolls of tape for the parking machines? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. And the next one is 19152. "This is Community Preservation Committee Request to Transfer Appropriate Funds for the FY 2020 Community Preservation Purposes. Order that the following amounts be appropriated or reserved for the fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Fund Estimated Revenues of $1,564,000." That's $1,312 FY Local Assessments, plus a $252 estimate in the state match for the fiscal 2020 Community Preservation Purpose. So, this is how they split up from the mandatory uses. $172,000 from the FY 20 Total Estimated CPA Revenue to the Community Preservation Fund for Open Space Reserve. The same amount, 172, from the FY 20 Estimated CPA Revenue to the Community Preservation Fund for Historic Preservation. $172,000 from the FY 20 Total Estimated CPA Revenue to the Community Preservation Reserve Fund for Affordable Housing. $70,000 from the FY 20 Estimated CPA Revenue to the Community Preservation Fund Administrative Account, and $978,500 from the FY 20 Total Estimated CPA Revenue to the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve Account. Also, the following amounts be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve for the Community Preservation Bonding Payment Purposes. This is things that have been granted, that money is borrowed on. $60,000 for principal and 900, or $9,975 for interest for the Bean Farm Bond. $95,000 for principal and $21,750 for interest for the Florence Fields Bond. $265,000 for principal and $13,250 for interest for the Pulaski Park Number One Bond. $65,000 for principal and $18,000 for interest for the Pulaski Park Number Two Bond. And that is all of them. So, do we have a motion in finance?
I would like to talk to Susan, please.
We...
Move upon the recommendation.
Second. Okay, now we can go.
Okay. On the, the bonds that would have your consumers' interest on this, how long are these bonds for?
Each one of these projects was bonded for a different time period, and they also were bonded during different years. So, I can get that information for you for the next meeting, just so you know where we are in the repayment schedule for all four of those here.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Finance Director on these? Very good. Then, hearing no questions. All in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. And the last one is 19154. "In Order to Authorize the Surplus of 5.25 acres on East Hampton Road." This is on the recommendation of the mayor and Planning and Sustainability. Whereas, on August 17th, 2017, the city council authorized the city to buy 55 acres of land with approximately 50 acres for the Rocky Hill Conservation Area on East Hampton Road, and 500, 5.25 acres for future economic development, solar takes or municipal use. And whereas, the 5.25 acre parcel is described in a deed recorded in Book 12857, page 9, in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds. And whereas, there's a demand, whereas, if there's a demand, the city would be best served by selling the 5.25 acre parcel for economic development. Order that the city council declares this 5.25 acre parcel surplus to the needs of the city, and authorizes the mayor to sell the parcel, subject to any restrictions the mayor deems appropriate. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
And the mayor's here for questions.
So, you may remember, there was the acquisition that happened, the Rocky Hill Conservation Area, where the property was added to our conservation holdings. And then, the city retained a 5.25 acre parcel, which we were putting aside for some potential use, potentially economic development, potentially solar, potential municipal uses. I should say that it's not currently land that's accessible. It's, and there's no sewer to the land. It's actually, as you're driving along Route 10 along the right, there's a rather steep hill. This is before Sunnyside Daycare, sort of that whole stretch of land. There is a private landowner that's been trying to develop on the property, and has had some challenges with that. And so, we believe that at this point, we don't see any potential use for it. It would be better served going back on the tax rule. So, we want to at least put it out and see whether or not there's any potential interest in it.
So, there's no particular buyer at this point, but we would authorize you, if one comes along, to negotiate a transaction.
So, plus, surplus it and allow, you know, one potential. There is, as I said, there's another property owner who's doing some development, or seeking to do some development. They may be interested in the land, we don't know. But there may be someone else. They would probably have to partner with this other developer, because again, the site costs of providing access to this, to where it's, you know, flat, would require some serious support to create a driveway. And then, there's the issue of sewer, so, we, again, it's sort of a residual from that initial conservation land acquisition. And we will be, we just want to see whether there's any actual interest in getting that up.
Counselor Laberge.
Yes. I think there probably would be some interest there, especially hearing what I'm hearing, possibly a storage area. That's becoming a big thing now. And also, like, offices, medical and so forth. So, I think this is the right way to go. And I thank you for this.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Klein.
We were just, we were just surplusing it, and we would have to then put it out to bid and see whether or not there's any interest in it. But, yeah. Counselor Laberge?
I recall that when we purchased this, there was discussion of the fact that there was a, it was going to become part of a kind of wildlife corridor, kind of part of a ring around the city, and, and that it would actually allow for passage in that area of particular kinds of wildlife. And so, I'm just wondering how this, if this parcel is used for development, how it will, in fact, affect that goal?
Yeah, it won't. Specifically, the, you know, the 55 acres of land, of the 50 acres was the piece that was contingent in the wild, that was all the wildlife area. This is a, this is a parcel that's, that's contiguous with the other commercially developable properties. So, it's really not going to impact that at all. And again, it was specifically not part of the conservation restriction on the land, because it was land that was developable because it was, you know, wasn't wetland. It wasn't part of that habitat corridor. So, that's why we feel that it can be, you know, again, put out to see whether or not there's some interest in it. But again, this is, you know, five acres of a 55 acre acquisition, you know, 50 of which are forever preserved in conservation. And again, there was a, going way, way back, there had actually been, you know, it had been zoned as an industrial, Route 10 Industrial Park originally. So, all that, you know, 100 acres of it was, had been zoned to be a potential future industrial park. And it was primarily owned by two to three owners. And one of the owners eventually decided that they didn't see an industrial park happening. So, they were one of the big landowners that said, "I want to just sell for conservation land." So, that's how that came about. So, it's definitely going to, you know, there's a large area that's being preserved, that's contiguous and matches up with other corridors that we have. And then, I would see Arcadia across the street as well.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes. I, I understand where Counselor Klein does have that concern. But we just purchased, I don't know if we did it off yet or not, 107 acres at Pine Grove Golf Course, which is 107 acres conservation land and wildlife. So, what you're talking about, as far as the wildlife itself, because of this other 107 acres, also a buzzin' goes through. So, it would not have an effect with that.
Yeah. We haven't actually made the purchases.
That's what I just said. You know, we have not did it or anything.
Yeah, we have done the Pine Grove purchase. We did get, we did get one of the grants that we had applied for, the land grant from the state. But then, there's still additional funding. You're right, that is part of that whole stretch that connects Wilson Road and it's that corridor together.
Right. Any other questions on this? Hearing none, and all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that's the end of our agenda. So, a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Sure.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That was a great finance meeting. Solid. Now, we're back in the full city council. We're going to go through some of the ones that you've already heard in the full city council. So, first is, under Financial Orders, 19151, "In Order to Authorize Payment of a Prior Year Bill."
Move to her.
Okay. I hear someone make a motion and second. Any discussion, full city council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Laberge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes.
As approved in first reading. Next, 19152, "In Order to Transfer Appropriate, Transfer Slash Appropriate Funds for Fiscal Year 2020 Community Preservation Purposes."
Move to her.
May I second it? Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Laberge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara. Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Okay. Approved on first reading as well. Next, 19154, "In Order to Authorize Surplus of 5 and 1/4 Acres on East Hampton Road." Motion on this, please to approve, made by Counselor Laberge, and seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion?
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Laberge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Laberge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved on second reading. Also on second reading, 19148, "In Order to Authorize Borrowing $1.5 Million for Paving Projects."
Move to her.
Okay. May I second? Any discussion on this? "I have always been against paving the roads. I refuse to bend the popular pressure and change my mind, even at this late stage of my career. And I'm happy to support this."
Shut up!
What was he saying? All right, good. So, we made and seconded, and it doesn't sound there's any discussion. So, let's have a roll call, please.
Counselor Laberge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Yes.
You just did that because you're up for reelection.
Yes.
And now, 1915, that passed unanimously. So, now, 19150, "In Order to Expand Parsons Brook Greenway."
Move to her. Second.
Okay, made and seconded. Any discussion on this order? This is first reading. Any questions on this?
Actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you mind reading into the record?
Yeah, yeah, should do that. And do we have anyone from the administration who wants to talk about it after?
I can talk about it. Mr. Fiden couldn't be here tonight, but I can certainly talk about it.
That would be good.
It's essentially, Counselor Laberge will know this, there's two sort of access, what were, had been planned for potential access roads. If you pull up the map just slightly, you'll see that off of two residential streets, there's like a narrow strip that's been reserved for access. And that was basically to support potential future development of the land that's in the middle, which we have now acquired as conservation land. So, it's no longer developable property. So, what we're really doing is just cleaning this up and then adding these two parcels to conservation land, since they're no longer needed for access to development. They were to be, if we were going to extend the street or create a new subdivision in that area, it was going to provide the access. So, that's how those other subdivisions were laid out, and they were required to create these. So, it's really just now going back and cleaning up. You'll see they're just little slimmer parcels, and they'll be, you know, part of the Parsons Brook Greenway pines, barrens for conservation and passive recreation purposes. Yeah. Which is part of...
Yeah.
The Willard.
The Willard's gravel.
The gravel.
The positions, the parcel that was acquired is part of that.
Right, okay. That's, you know, more helpful than me reading it out loud, although at the request of Counselor, I will read into the record. So, I say the magic words, and if there's further discussion, we can have it. So, we are talking about 19150, "In Order to Expand Parsons Brook Greenway." Order that, this is on the recommendation of the mayor, Planning and Sustainability in the Conservation Commission. Order that whereas the open space and recreation plan 2018 to 2025 recommends preserving land and connections at the 118-acre Parsons Brook Greenway Pine Barrens. And whereas, the developers of Sovereign Way and Cardinal Way donated two thin strips of property to potentially allow a road to be built from Sovereign Way to Cardinal Way. If you're interested, map ID 336, 334, give or take .55 acres, and map ID 36293, give or take .4 acres. And whereas, with the preservation of the Greenway, the road will never be built, and the thin strips of land are only going to be used for access to the Greenway. So, order that the mayor is authorized to transfer the care and custody of those two strips to the Conservation Commission to add to the Parsons Brook Greenway Pine Barrens for conservation and passive recreation purposes, provided by Master in Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C. Subject, however, to the city reserving the right to use the land for underground city utilities. All right. So, now, further questions or discussion on this one? Seems like a good proposal. So, oh, Counselor Klein.
I just have a quick question about the concept of access. Will it actually be maintained on an ongoing basis with a road or a path, or is it just a green space?
I think it's a green space. I don't believe there's any plans for a path. Yeah. Yeah. Not that I'm aware of.
No further discussion? All right, sounds like we've all understand it and can vote on first reading. So, for a roll.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
And Counselor Laberge.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved on first reading. There are two ordinances that need to be referred somewhere before we vote. They at least need to go to Legislative Matters. We'll take them separately. First, 19154, 53, "North Hampton Safe City Ordinance." So, here, motion to approve, to refer this to Legislative Matters.
Refer to Legislative Matters?
Second.
Second, by Counselor Dwight. Any other referrals to other committees or anything? Or, I mean, it's also an order to discuss if you, if you want, or want to make a... Up to the council. But at a minimum, the Legislative Matters. But if there's anything else, just checking. Okay. So, nothing, just one committee? Okay. Okay. So, any discussion on the referral? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of referring it to committee, say aye.
Aye.
If there was any abstention, so it is referred. Next, 19155, "Ordinance to Delete Reference to the Depot Lot from Section 312-110." Motion to refer to... Motion to refer to Legislative Matters. By Counsel Dwight, and by Counsel Bidwell. Any discussion, or does it go anywhere else, transportation parking?
We could send it there. I think that at this point, we'd be, you know, that this change has already happened. And so it might slow the, I'd leave it up to my colleagues to figure out whether they want to send it there. I'm fine with it going to the TPC if needed. Is there a reason that?
And this is like, we've, this is like an even, this is like an ancient one. Like it used to be the Depot Restaurant. And we've, and then it changed to Union Station. So we found this artifact of a reference to Depot Lot, which is like old, from the 80s. And so we were, as we were searching and cross-referencing, we were like, oh my gosh, this reference to something that hasn't been called. So we're basically just deleting the reference to Depot. So it's, I don't know that it's gonna be, it's not very something.
Aye.
Yeah. Whatever you prefer. It's part of the other ones that have been, well, you'll have one tonight and then we discovered yet another one. And so, and this was like, we hope it's the last one. So it's the gift that keeps on giving, you're finding.
Okay, so I'm hearing just Legislative Matters. So that's what I'm hearing, okay. So motion on the floor, is that correct? Do we have that? So any discussion on the motion to refer? Then all those in favor of referral, say aye?
Aye.
There's any abstention, so it's a free. So now we have actual ordinances to vote on, vote on. The first is 19-114, an ordinance relative to stop signs on Fulton Avenue. All right, so traffic ordinances are fun because they're hard to describe, although maybe not.
That's why we have Counsel Nash. If it's any consolation, you've actually already read this into the record once before, but I don't know.
I read this into the record.
Well, I think for referral, I, well, I know we did, well, I'm not, I can't be positive of that, so.
But now we're about to debate it. So anyway, we'll take, Counsel Dwight, you make a motion, maybe it's for approval.
Yeah, it's somewhat.
Seconded by?
Second.
Counsel Klein and Counsel O'Donnell. So, discussion on this, please. We defer the chair of GPC to start.
Sure, so the reason this was read into the record before had to do with that we permitted a temporary installation to allow a permanent installation that had already happened of stop signs on Fulton. It was council asserting its right over the installation of stop signs. So this is, so we already voted on that temporary installation. This is for the permanent installation and it's come from the TPC with a positive recommendation.
Okay, and I mean, I remember one of the reasons why we wanted to go to TPC is because you were discussing broader issues in that, in that area. And then you were talking about.
And so I can speak to some of that, that, that. So first of all, that the, the police are going to continue to be on Fulton into the near future. And part of the, the question that came up in my mind had to do with why are we installing stop signs now while we have the police still there? And there's discussion for future possible redesign of, you know, where the parking might go on Pleasant Street or Con Street. Well, one of the answers was that, you know, discussion reveals things, it's great, that the police aren't there all night. So that during the hours that they aren't there, it's, it's, it's very helpful to have these stop signs to help direct the traffic as to where they're gonna go. And that as far as the long-term plans, those things are still up in the air and that if we change plans, that we will change the ordinance with these signs, so.
Any other discussion from the council? All right, I think there are related issues here, but they're not really on the agenda tonight, so. As regards the stop signs, so there you have it. If there's no other discussion, we need a roll call. First reading, please.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBard?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved on first reading. So now, 19-125, an ordinance related to wireless, wireless antennas on street. What's the next word gonna be? I bet it's gonna be poles.
It is poles.
Poles. This is the first reading on this, so.
New approval?
Okay.
Second.
All right, thank you. So I see two versions of it.
Yes.
Maybe the chair of Legislative Matters knows why.
In action, Carolyn's here too as well. But we, the one thing that we, in the process of the discussion that we wanted to amend was the height by which the, these systems would be placed on a pole. It was originally proposed at seven feet. Speaking as someone who's six foot five and someone who, or anyone else who might be driving a truck, a vehicle or anything else, if these things had project beyond a foot or two from the pole, they could actually create a hazard for any vehicle pulling in. Carolyn was kind enough to draft some language based on our discussion. We felt that was appropriate to move it forward as it was and then we could amend it on the floor here based on the language she's proposing, which now sets the height at nine feet instead of seven and actually a critical language and not project into the street.
So, excuse me, go ahead.
No, that's it.
So the committee passed the original version out. Did not amend in the committee, so we have to do that.
Right, with the understanding that we would amend on the floor.
Okay, all right. So let's see, so therefore, we're dealing with the original unamended version. I could read it out loud or I could, we could waive the reading and we could just, it's a public document, public can read it and we could just explain it. Maybe our senior land use planner could help with that process. It's a council's pleasure.
Accessible to the conversation.
That makes sense. So Ms. Mish, would you mind or? We'd welcome your help.
So this ordinance was proposed as a way to sort of catch up to technology that's coming upon us. We've had ordinances, zoning ordinances that since the late 90s, I want to say, that addresses telecommunications systems on what we call monopoles, which are very tall pole structures on private property. And as the technology changes, these systems get smaller and the need for more and faster data all the time is triggering these, this newer technology where the antennas are placed closer together, low to the ground. And for the most part, the communication providers are interested in locating in the street right away. So we don't really have any language now that specifically addresses that. We currently require special permits for any new pole that's installed so that would trigger a new pole in the right way on top of what city council would also have to approve as a new pole in the right way. So this tries to address those, that gap and be ready for this, you know, next wave of installations for this technology. So there are two pieces of it. One is to sort of identify these as small cell systems because they're, they're meant to be posted together and have a shorter reach essentially with the radio frequency. And then identifies that there would be a fee established for the installation of each of these paid to the city that was proposed as $400 per pole. And that the providers would be solely responsible for the maintenance of that equipment. And then it establishes the height, so that's not in zoning, that's just separate. And then in the zoning portion, it establishes a review process, but an administrative review process because the city actually can't technically deny the installation of these telecommunications antennas based on FCC regulations. So currently, we have a special permit process or site plan process in front of the planning board that tends to set up this false sense for the public that if they come and weigh in on their dislike of the system or their concerns about safety or environmental or health impacts that some of these, that there are concerns out there that people have, that the board can just deny them. And the board really can't deny them based on that because federal government has sort of superseded that and said, you know, we have to approve these. So this ordinance also sets up an administrative review, but it says specifically what has to be done, what things have to be met. And so this height, minimum nine feet, and that only the antenna and the cable supporting that as well as an emergency shut-off can be mounted on the pole. Any other equipment has to be put in a vault underground. So that's the bulk of the two ordinances that are involved.
Thank you, and so, so if someone comes, they meet the criteria, they get the permit. And is that, and we'll go to Counsel Dwight. And then, so we're operating under, as you said, FCC regulations. What else are we operating under? Is there any state law that sets any ground rules for us?
No.
Just curiosity, no, okay. So how much latitude do we have generally? When we charge $400 a pop, could we charge 800? I don't suggest we do, but can we?
So there has to be a relationship to the fee.
It's a fee, right, 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 okay.
What it would cover.
Right, right, okay.
I know that, the city of Boston's been doing this for a few years. They're charging $2,500 per pole, for their poles that they own in the city. So I don't know, I think certainly they could be, that anybody in the FCC has, I think, made this clear that this can be challenged if it's, if it appears to be sort of beyond what would be necessary as a fee that's related to the impact.
Like, like all fees, I suppose, right? As people, okay, so maybe that was, thank you. And that was awful, but I probably asked an unhelp, I gave an unhelpful example in my question. So what if we wanted to, for example, that fee can be waived if they provide free internet? And so could we, in theory, have a program where we provide, require them as part of their permit to provide free internet to, say, people based on income as part of their permit process? Don't worry, it's not gonna hold up my vote, but I'm just curious. I want, I want to understand our latitude. If we're not operating under any state restrictions, how, you know, what, what, how far can we go? And have you considered stuff like that?
Yeah.
So, you know, I've studied this issue a little bit. I mean, this has sort of been, the Trump FCC has sort of re-rote this through a little bit and sort of taken away local rights. It's been somewhat controversial and basically have given us a very short window by which we have any regulatory review, about 90 days. So basically, we have 90 days to do, to do something on it, but we really can't say no. I would be very doubtful that we could demand that, I mean, because all, we're not actually granting, we're granting them construction rights in the public way. And these are like repeater antennas. I, I would be very doubtful if that would be allowed or hold up or hold up to FCC scrutiny. That would be my opinion.
Okay.
Verizon currently doesn't offer, you know, DSL or internet service. They're not, they're not a provider, so I'm not sure how that would work. Because these aren't Wi-Fi, you know, hives, they're not. So I'm not really sure how that would work.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
And then, and I'll turn over to other councils, I've monopolized the floor. But, you know, if, so are you saying that we have 90 days to pass a ordinance? And then after that, we're sort of like out of luck?
Do you want to explain the shot clock?
90 days, so once, let's say Verizon comes in and says, I want to put my system on this, on these three poles, we have 90 days.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's what it means. 90 days to pass an ordinance.
I thought you were saying the FCC gave local communities like?
No, 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 they just.
Although that might not be surprising.
Right, this is a policy decided by tweet at 3:00 in the morning?
It's like we can't have a 10-month review process and we can't forward it to every committee and we can't have, you know, three months of public hearings and those.
I see.
Yeah, that's the, that's what it really is. So that's part of why we're trying to create a somewhat compact process so that we at least have some way to regulate it.
Okay, thank you. So my colleague, Counsel Large, has been waiting.
Actually, it was to this point that some conversation was had in Legislative Matters. We still refer to it with a positive recommendation. It's worth noting, though, the frustration of essentially a non-representative body, an agency, that is not elected but appointed, has actually, can supersede and direct communities to do its bidding. You, actually, this happens with the FAA with drones, for instance, same, same thing. They dictate that now public airspace is now six inches off the ground or it used to be 500 feet. The, it's frustrating, particularly with this government. The fact is that we're given this slight semblance of control and management insofar as that we can dictate how high up the pole it can go. It can't project out over cars. And beyond that, we can't manage the ubiquity. We can adjust the fees. I have a feeling Boston's gonna get nailed on that $2,500 pole thing eventually. I think someone's, I think Verizon or somebody's gonna turn around and sue them because as we noted, you have to justify a fee. And a $2,500 per pole administrative cost would be, I think that's a stretch, even for Boston. So we certainly can't. And so it is maddening, it is frustrating, it is just part of a large catalog of frustrations, but this is. I, I've been thinking for, for weeks since our conversation about what can we do in some, in some way to give us ourselves more agency here? And it's not there, and it's not there. So insofar as, I've heard, we've heard from a number of people So insofar as, I've heard, we've heard from a number of people who are concerned about RF impacts on, or potential for health issues, also the unsightliness of the poles. Counsel Murphy was actually kind enough to share with us some photographs of a pole on Elm Street near Smith, of one of the units. The units are all different. If you look, if you just do an image search for, you know, 5G antennas on poles, they look like, they look like essentially the assortment of droids you can see in a Star Wars film. It's a variety, they're all completely different, look like they were cobbled together by someone high on airplane glue or something, but it was...
Like the cantina scene.
Yes, exactly, the cantina scene. And so...
Or the bus station in Total Recall.
So we can't dictate aesthetics. We can't dictate, there are limits that are established under federal law for RF transmissions, radio frequency transmissions. But the fact is, is that none of these have been vetted or peer-reviewed to the point, to the extent that the health impact is realized or understood. But it's the Trump administration and his FCC who is intent on, on making fast-tracking all these systems so that they will provide greater download speeds, so you can look at your cat pictures much quicker on your phone.
Actually, gave it an acronym called the FAST Plan, the FAA.
Wow, that was clever. Almost like the USA Patriot app.
Facilitate America's superiority in 5G technology, the FAST Plan. That's what the FCC, FCC...
I'm having...
These new regulations.
I'm having a problem holding down my dinner, so I'll leave it at that, then. But so, so we did forward it with a recommendation, being fully aware of our very limited chance to say no.
Thank you very much. So Counselor Nash?
Yeah, do we know why they have emergency shut-offs? I'm just, you know, dawn of the now, we don't have that for cable on the poles or for telephone, but each one of these devices has emergency shut-off, and why is that?
Well, I would say because cable and phone are low voltage, so it's probably not an issue, but these obviously are powered up, so, you know, if they have to work on it, they have to have it. Shut-off.
Is that it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, there's, if you go to the FCC, if you go to the FCC website about their FAST Plan, it's quite remarkable that, you know, they basically have, you know, new rules that will reduce federal regulatory impediments and speeding up stated local review of small cells. The FCC reformed rules designed decades ago to accommodate small cells. The reforms ban short-sighted municipal roadblocks that have the effect of prohibiting deployment of 5G and give them a reasonable deadline to approve or disapprove small cell sighting applications, so 90 days.
Did you get the sarcastic tone for the, I don't want that right back to you.
Restoring internet freedom and all kinds of other wonderful things.
I see. The councillor forward seven.
I just want to say for the record that I have a lot of concern about the advent of 5G, just in terms of what has already been discussed here, potential health impacts. We just don't have enough research, we don't know enough about it. These are really unsightly boxes, and thank you, Counselor Murphy, for sending those photos around, because it really did show how incredibly unsightly they are. In legislative matters, we talked about the height in terms of the aesthetics and the safety, but there is also, safety in terms of, you know, tall people, tall trucks, but I think having them as high up as we can potentially could cut some of the potential harmful impact. And the only reason that I sent this forward, my vote on legislative matters, is because of this conundrum that we have to do this within a three-month period, or essentially it's taken out of our hands completely. But I did want to say for the record that I'm pretty concerned about this and very frustrated by the fact that this FAST Plan, I didn't realize it was called that, comes from, you know, corporate lobby pressure, big money on our legislators and our president and the FCC, and that is, you know, deeply concerning.
Thank you. May I ask a question, because now I'm confused? Do we have 90 days to pass this ordinance, or no?
No, 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 no.
So when you say, that's what I thought. So when you say we have to do this, what are you referring...
The boxes will be installed anyway. At least we have the earth to, you know, set some limits about what it's going to look like, that some of it's going to be underground, all of those pieces, and that we get to set a fee.
Got it.
Because otherwise, we wouldn't in fact receive any remuneration for the installation of these, if we didn't actually pass this ordinance.
So, thank you. So as a practical matter, the companies are putting them in, like, soon?
No.
Basically true?
The good choice I took was of one being installed as we speak.
Okay. That's pretty soon.
We've already had four poles already, but they haven't been installed.
Have we really? Okay. Got it. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Oh, Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, I'd actually like to offer a couple amendments to this, because I thought more things were going to get thought about than just the height of the pole. The first one is in the new definition of small cell telecommunications, where it talks near the end, "For the purposes of providing 5G wireless telecommunications." I would just strike the 5G, because in fact, the four that are now being installed are 4G infill, not 5G. So it probably makes sense not to put in a designation of exactly what it is. It's a small cell, you get four or five, well, whatever it is, just call it, for the purposes of wireless telecommunications, and take that out of there.
Do we want to tie?
Sure.
Just because it's messy, so...
I'll second that amendment.
There is a motion, I hear it's seconded. Any discussion? Removing 5G, just from one place?
That's the only place it's mentioned like that.
Okay. So if there's no more discussion on amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, removing 5G, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
And the other one, the other ones are in the paragraph, paragraph one, the following page. The first one is, wireless small cell telecommunications applicants must include radio frequency analysis to demonstrate the proposed equipment and have the smallest number of pole attachments necessary. Really, radio frequency analysis has nothing to do with that. If you want that in there, just say, "To include analysis to demonstrate the proposed equipment will have the smallest number of pole attachments," since it really isn't a radio frequency analysis, it's more our analysis of how much junk they want to hang on the pole, but it really doesn't affect the radio frequency.
Okay.
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
All right. So...
So just deleting the words "radio frequency"?
Yeah, so it's still requesting analysis, we don't define it as radio frequency analysis, because that really isn't appropriate. We're analyzing the junk on a pole, not the radio frequency of the gear on the pole, which is regulated already. I mean, it's going to be on a certain frequency that it's assigned.
Okay. So it's radio frequency analysis, it's capitalized, it's a thing, right? Like, it's a thing? Is it...
Yeah.
Is there a reason why it was put in, or...
Yeah, so, the idea is, so even now, under the current rules, radio frequency is required to show that there's demonstrated need, that there's a gap that's being filled. And so by, so if you have a lot of overlapping RF coverage, then that means that you've got more poles than maybe is necessary. So the idea is to say, you know, request the fewer, fewest possible pole installations to obtain that coverage. And I think the idea is, so, I guess pole attachments, meaning the poles are already there for the most part, so maybe you don't need the attachment on every single pole, maybe you can do every other pole. So I think it would be beneficial to maintain the language that we still want to evaluate the radio frequency reports that come from.
Just very briefly, and then we'll go to Counsel Dwight. Another idea would be, you just say "and," you could say "radio frequency analysis and demonstrate."
Yes.
Think about that, but Counsel Dwight.
Well, that's, that's not terrible. I mean, the...
Thank you.
Part of this conversation, we had this conversation as well, is because there are a series of competing agencies. Currently now, on the taller poles, we actually have mandated and do mandate that competing systems combine their property on the pole, on one pole. We're not going to have a, have the town bristling with these tall towers, and that we were allowed to do. The FCC didn't bark us down on that one. In this instance, you have competing systems that will be having, generating, each unit generates its own RF frequency. And to Carolyn's point, the overlap and the density of multiple machines in one pole could create a higher intensity of radio frequency transmissions that you wouldn't otherwise expect if it were just literally one per pole. We could have applicants, you know, we could have poles with Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, whoever, you know, the Google Towers, at which point you have all these machines emanating radio frequency that's approved by the FCC, but there's a concentration of RF transmissions that would, I think, to this point, we should say that you have to keep it within the limits of acceptable norms, so.
Counsel Murphy? And then Counsel Klein.
Well, I mean, I understand the intent, but the sentence doesn't say that. If your desire is to do a radio frequency analysis to demonstrate that we have the fewest number of small cell installations in the city to cover, that is correct, but to say radio frequency analysis to demonstrate that the proposed equipment will have the smallest number of pole attachments is just a wacky statement. In other words, we don't want any more small cells than we need to cover the city. So we radio frequency analysis to make sure we don't have excessive small cells to get the job done is appropriate. To say we're doing the analysis to limit the amount of equipment on any given pole is absurd. Does that make sense?
Nope.
Yeah.
So the concept behind it is fine to make sure that we don't have more of these things than we need in the city.
Actually, I don't think it's referring to attachments on a single pole. I think it means pole attachments, meaning spread out across the city.
Spread out.
Which is what you said, which is what...
Right. So it's the smallest number of these small cell systems.
Yeah.
Not equipment on a particular pole, but the smallest number of total small cells to cover the city adequately. I mean, the sentence needs to be a lot clearer than what it is. And that, you know, I'm not saying we don't want to accomplish the goal of having the fewest number of small cells possible to get the job done, but it's just not written technically correct to deal with that, and it's a relatively easy fix.
Counsel Klein?
I realize my comment is not to the amendments, I'll wait until we finish this.
I actually do not have an amendment on the floor, but, yeah, that probably is...
Actually, we do, for purposes of discussion, I did second, so there is...
Yeah, we do.
I stand corrected. So, all right. Anyone else want to weigh, you have more to say, and then Counsel, actually, Counsel Bill hasn't spoken?
Oh, well, I do understand this distinction. And aren't you in position to propose some slightly altered language?
Well, I can certainly try to do that. I mean, it's...
I thought I saw you acting as...
I've been writing on, I was more interested in making my point in a not, in a comprehensible manner than actually coming up the lap. You certainly could say something like, "Radio frequency analysis to demonstrate that the smallest number of small cell sites will be installed to serve the city." I mean, the language is hard to do, like, on the spot here, but I do think we need to correct the language to reflect the true intent of what we're saying. No more small cells are necessary to get the job done. It doesn't relate to equipment on, because this could be implied to be pole attachments on a pole, not necessarily the number of, total number of these things. It could be clearer than it is.
So, so what we need is, we need councillors to confer with experts, even if they are experts themselves, and bring actual language that has been vetted to the next council meeting.
I mean, I really, because I've got one more of these, which I'm happy to mention, but it may make more sense just to refer this back to committee to get the language right and bring it back, bring it back and deal with it later. Because this is, it's a matter of bad language, it isn't a matter, I don't think of us agreeing what we're trying to do, it's just writing it correctly so that it, you know...
Alternatively, we could bring it to the second reading as well. This is your first reading, right?
This is, did this come up in legislative matters?
No.
Did not?
No.
Do you want to skip to your third one and then come back?
Well, I can certainly bring up, I mean, this one's on the floor, but if you don't mind, I'll do the third one, see what it is.
My guess.
And the third one did come up, and we talked about it in legislative matters. All equipment other than antennas wires, an emergency shut-off shall be placed in an underground vault. The power supplies are really not conducive to being buried in the ground. I gave you a picture, when it's all covered with heat sinks, it needs air to ventilate it, it gets hot. So burying it in the ground, I don't know where that came from, but it's a really, really bad idea for the electronics. And when I was taking the pictures of the pole, that both of the nice guys there that were installing it said, "What lunatic would want to bury this in the ground? It's going to cook, because it needs to breathe." And it's not that big a thing. I mean, the boxes that cable hangs on the poles for the telephone system are gigantic. These things are not, things like, about like this. And if you see it on the pole, the pole I gave you the picture of has the shut-off, the power supply, and the antenna, they're all on the pole. And it isn't really, you know, there's bigger things on poles now than these things. They really aren't conducive to being buried in or on the ground. So, you know, that, I don't agree with at all, because that's going to cause a real hairball for the people trying to apply for these things, because they're not going to want to do that. And where did that come from?
It's a, it's, it came from wanting to minimize the impact to the future aesthetics of all by continuing to add equipment. There are communities in, around the country that are requiring this. Washington D.C. has required the equipment to be underground. There are other systems that are actually designed entirely underground, with nothing above ground, including the antennas. So we felt like it was important to, to, you know, we need to allow these, but we want to have the least impact on the community, on the streetscape as we can, so that's why...
Did anyone ever speak to the engineers putting these in, pairing them?
I think one of the original, I think one of the original versions of the ordinance, there was discretion, there was sort of like, they had to strive to bury it. And, but the city solicitor didn't feel comfortable with that, and, because it was, it just wasn't really a, wasn't really a process, and especially like having a staff member be in charge of that, it was too subjective. And so I think the city solicitor really insisted that it has to be one or the other. It can't be, you know, it can't, you know, it can't be like, to the full extent possible, try, but we may not let you, kind of a thing, because that would be a strange process for someone to go through.
But, I mean, that's, that's a legal process. But anybody ever talk to any of these vendors about, is this thing conducive to be...
There are, there are systems that do go underground, like, the antenna goes underground, like, everything goes up. Like, they don't actually have to be on a pole, like that.
But the ones that are underground tend to be in large utility conduits with ventilation and all kinds of stuff, not, not a hole in the ground at that point.
Exactly.
Which is the...
This is a power source, not the, not the antenna structure.
No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have, my next door neighbor has an underground power source, and, I mean, and runs their power to their house underground.
Yeah, but this is a little power supply box, it gets hot, which is why it's covered with heat sinks. So, I don't know, I'd just like to, perhaps...
Well, if you, if you'd like, we can consult with someone about it and just get some information about it for a second reading, and then we can, you know. Because, but I think the way the process is set up, it, you sort of have to pick one, you can't say, that is the challenge, so, yeah.
And I think just sort of long-term, looking at the build-out of this, and, and the technology's going to change, I think, I wouldn't disagree with you in terms of the pushback that we might get from these providers, because the easiest, simplest thing is just to throw up a pole, throw up the equipment and walk away. But knowing that we're going to have lots of these coming, that starts to add up and changes the landscape. So we want to minimize.
We're like, starting to behave like a bunch of fagians around a pot with a Verizon guy in there arguing about whether we're putting carrots or parsnips in with them. I mean, we really don't have the answers to these questions, but we want to move it along anyway, because we're compelled to do that without really getting the answers to the questions. And certainly, I mean, the other thing I'd suggest is, if you're insisting we put these things in holes in the ground, they probably should be permitted, this should be permitted by DPW, who controls the right-of-way and controls digging holes in the ground rather than planning and development. Because you guys don't have anything to do with digging holes in the ground in the right-of-way, so.
That's interesting. So, if I may, I think, I think it's interesting, I feel sort of like I'm designing a space shuttle, and I don't know what I'm doing, which scares me. And I'm pretty sure I'm at least one of the biggest nerds in this room, so if I'm uncomfortable, you know, I, you know, I think that here are our options, perhaps, three ops, three suggestions. So this can go back to legislative matters, which I believe doesn't meet till November, and go to city services, which is, would be in the jurisdiction of the committee, for a fresh perspective. We can vote on it tonight and make sure we do the work that we have to do to get these questions answered, because if we have questions, we have to answer them and get them answered. And then bring hard language, in fact, be nice to submit the language, not in a way that violates the open meeting law, but in a way that submits it to the council and the public for review ahead of time and to the planning department. And vote on it tonight and come back, or we can continue. So actually, you have four choices. Counselor Klein?
I do think that this discussion of the amendments really has brought to light our lack of knowledge around the technical aspects of this, so that's what I wanted to say before you articulated it.
I hope I didn't jump in front of you, sorry.
No, it's totally fine. And I don't know if we're still speaking to the amendment, but just to add to this conversation about our lack of technical expertise here, one of the things I'm thinking about is we've now made a recommendation that we move these up by another two feet, and I'm wondering if there's potential for that, meaning that there will need to be more of them, because it's higher and we're trying to provide coverage, and I don't, I don't know. I mean, you can shake your head now here on the floor, but I just think that there are enough technical questions here, and we're kind of coming up with simple solutions of how to change the language, that this really needs to go back to the drawing board on some level. And I'm not sure that sending it to one of the city council committees makes the most sense, because we don't have that technical expertise. And I think the last point that Counselor Murphy brought up is really important about the right-of-way and who, you know, if we're digging holes in the ground, who has jurisdiction over that. So I just think there are enough technical questions, and there are enough kind of procedural questions here, that we need to, to get something a little bit more sound before we vote on it.
Okay. Process, if it goes to a committee, well, obviously what we do is we bring in, we bring in the experts to us, so whether it's the DPW, or planning, or all of the above, that's what we would, rather than just decide it ourselves in committee. But I take your point. So we're going to go, actually, Counselor Carney has not spoken, so I'd like to...
Just to that point of deferring to additional committee, my sense is it would make better sense going to the original legislative matters for more in-depth, rather than bringing the folks from city services, you know, further up to speed on the technicalities. So whether that means holding an additional legislative matters or something else, rather, and plus, our, not, November 7th, city services is jam-packed with... November 7th, City Services is jam-packed with hearings for public street acceptance and another presentation from senior services. I don't think that would make sense.
Point well taken. Councilor Murphy.
And Legislative Matters meets on the 11th?
The 14th.
The 14th. All right. All right, so it would still come back for our second meeting in November. So it would be done, theoretically done for the second meeting. And I mean, what we're doing is more like committee work anyways rather than the councilwork.
Thanks.
It's the 12th.
It's the 12th.
The 12th, yes. So it would come back for our second meeting in November.
Okay, let's dispense with this. All I know is we're not going to vote on it tonight, so I open up to the council, someone make a motion to send it somewhere or delay it.
There's a motion currently on the floor.
There is, but this would be a subsidiary motion that sort of... No, no, no. Good point. So what we could do for simplicity is have the motion withdrawn if that were...
I withdraw my second.
Second?
Yep, that's fine. And I would move we send it back to Legislative Matters for further consideration.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion on the referral. Dwyane.
Just a brief comment. I'm just disappointed that these questions didn't come up during the first Legislative Matter. I understand that Council Murphy was able to get some new information at the time, but it would have been a little more timely if this were introduced at the first Legislative Matters time. But in fact, although regardless, we wouldn't have had the answers there anyway. But so I look forward to a more expansive conversation in the next one.
And the people who can answer these questions have to be invited to the meeting. It goes without saying. Right? Okay, so I don't know who that is, but we'll find them.
Well, that's... There's the rub. There's the rub.
Right. So we're done acting like Hamlet because we've made a decision. So Councilor Klein.
I just wanted to go back to the mayor and Ms. Mish and ask them, though, if they feel like they want to take another crack at this. I mean, I'm not totally comfortable with Legislative Matters pulling this apart just because of the level of technical questions that we have. So I'm wondering if that could be an alternative.
I mean, we can certainly try to... Again, we tried to bring answers to questions. We had not really got much of that matter. There's a reserve show. Washington, D.C. has required that they're allowed to be seen in the underground. Obviously, the utility goes well. So they're definitely going to say, "This is bad. It's going to overheat. They're not going to like that. They're going to want it to be underground." So it's partially a mistake. But we can definitely try to get more details on the scientific parts of it. All right, is it safe to be underground? Is it unsafe to be underground, et cetera? It is definitely more money to bury things underground. There's no doubt about it. It's always going to cost more money. But again, it's also what limited control we have, whether, you know, we want, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. But we'll do some research on it. But if you want us to come to Legislative Matters, we can. I'm not sure who we can bring in. I mean, I'm sure we could bring Verizon in, and I'm sure they'll tell you that, you know, that this would be the end of times if they had to bury these things and would put them out of business. And, you know, we could go back to, you know, crank telephones. I'm pretty sure that's what they'll tell you, but I... We can do some research on it.
I'm pretty sure that if push came to shove, we would hear from the FCC that we were serving in our little podunk way as an impediment to the advancement of...
Possible, but we can certainly do some research on it. And then the question of the DPW, I mean, as you know, a lot of, most planning applications go to DPW. And so this would be routed to DPW. I mean, I can ask DPW if they have a burden desire to take this on. I doubt that this is... I don't think they're dying to take on more licensing issues. And so I think it just came out of the planning because it was, you know, they were the ones developing the regulations and they were trying to make it the least burdensome. And so, but certainly. And there's really no discretion. And that's the other piece of this is that, you know, Alan was pretty clear that unless you're going to give it to the planning board or some other body, that it will lead to be really clear guidelines and it's like a really thorough approval process. So we can have the solicitor look at it, we can have DPW look at it.
While we're requesting information, some information relative to what these vaults look like. Dimensions, cost, ventilation, other systems, what they look like. If the cost be considered prohibitive, whatever, but any dimensional sizes. I mean, a vault is any number of things. It could be a massive crypt or it could be a box about the size of this transformer, so...
And what they're made of, like what we're putting into the ground.
Right.
We can definitely... I mean, there are lots of companies that are creating these underground vaults for all sorts and sizes of different infrastructure. So it's out there. The information's out there. I think I would just add in terms of the evaluation of which department is doing this. This is part of this, this is within the zoning ordinance. DPW doesn't generally enforce or review licensing or permitting that's in the zoning ordinance. So that's another reason why I think it's set up this way that the planning, the director of planning sustainability is in charge of...
Is there an ordinance where if you want to dig anything, you need a permit from the DPW? Where does this cancel that one out?
They would have to get a trench permit to do it.
Trench permit, yes.
So DPW would be reviewing it as a trench permit, but that would be, that's more of a construction requirement, not an approval for construction.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, they would definitely have to, you know...
So they'll be involved.
They have to pay a trench permit fee too, by the way. I just wanted to put that in there.
Ching. Put that in your other involved money.
So the motion's currently to refer to Legislative Matters for further review.
To the next meeting, whenever it may be, to give you flexibility. Okay, good. So any more discussion? All those in favor of the referral? Well, wait a minute. When it gets there, please adopt the planning amendments as well. We're not doing that, so...
We'll do that.
So all those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed and abstention. So thank you. It's referred. By the way, that was great. I actually really appreciate that attention detail from multiple councilors on that. That's our job, so thank you. Now...
We have six G by the time we finish.
All right. So 19-128, an ordinance to amend Chapter 312 of the Code of Ordinances by amending 312-110 to delete reference to Union Station parking lot. First reading.
Move approval.
Second.
Your second.
Second.
Made and seconded. Let's see what we got here. This is not the depot. This is... Okay. So now we are deleting the off-street parking areas. Well, you know, it's sort of beautiful soup. So maybe the mayor wants us to describe it in his own words. Or Counselor Nash?
Your words or less?
Yeah, can you tweet it? Right. Is that what it is?
So this is basically, if those of you who've read in the newspaper or come to TPC and to Legislative Matters, this is to basically go back and remove the municipal parking controls that are on the leased spaces that we have, daytime leased spaces that we have in the Union Station lot. We contracted out for services to manage the parking in the lot in some ways to try to unify the parking and make it more clear to people. I think many people thought it was a city-owned lot. It's actually not a city-owned lot. We have a 99-year lease for the daytime, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. use of a set number of spots down near Pleasant Street, not up near the train station, but down near Pleasant Street. And we had been using, you know, our own city meters to regulate them as Union Station became operational again and had, you know, business uses or train uses. There was confusion about the parking and the delineation between at 6 o'clock, when the whole lot reverts back to being a private lot, and how they could manage it. And so we had many years of discussion with the ownership of Union Station to try to figure out a way that we could manage it better together. And we ended on this idea of one of us managing it, managing the whole lot. And so it ended up that we put out an RFP seeking contract services to manage it. And so essentially what's happening is we still have our, you know, we still have these spaces at the front of a lot, which during the daytime, the pricing is at, you know, municipal pricing. It can't be any higher than municipal pricing until 6 o'clock. And then after that, again, it's a privately owned lot and they control it. We did require a 15-minute free access to the lot, and that's something that SDOT also wanted to see there, just so that there could be easy for them to drop off of passengers. Obviously, we have 15-minute free spots throughout the downtown, so that's not an uncommon time limit for people to drop off and pick off. It's not to... It's not designed to... It's really just designed for somebody who wants to drive in, drop someone off, and then come back and pick them up. So that's the way that this was structured. The owners of Union Station have invested in the technology, the gate system technology, the kiosks. They are validating parking for their own customers because obviously it's their lot. And again, they're charging what we charge at their garage and what we charge at the Gothic Street lot that is not as much as Main Street, which is a dollar, but they are not allowed to go over that. So it's a three-year contract, and so far, the management seems to be working quite well. There was a little bit of a learning curve, but that's all we're doing now is going back and just removing these from the books because they're no longer being enforced as municipal spaces. We don't have to enforce it. We don't have to, we don't get tickets. You actually couldn't get a ticket because of the way the gate system works. And then we collect revenue, guaranteed revenue. Whether anybody parks there or doesn't park there, we get a guaranteed revenue based on, you know, what pricing they're using in the lot for our spots. So that's the context in which I'm coming forward to say we want to remove these from the books because they're now sort of irrelevant.
Right. Thank you. Okay. And Counselor Dwyane.
You know, after lamenting that I didn't ask, we didn't have these questions about the towers in LM, I forgot to ask, I'm assuming, but I don't know if this is true, who's responsible for plowing or have we offered to?
They have always been responsible for all the maintenance and plowing.
Oh, I thought there were city subcontractors who did plow it at one point. No?
This is one of the greatest leases in the history of leases. You know, the owners of Union Station quickly found out when they bought the property. It was a 99-year lease. We actually, it was then the depot, rest, it was the owners of the depot, basically. And it was basically given to us in exchange for the city repaving the lot. So the city actually paid to repave the entire lot, and then in consideration of that, we were granted these municipal spaces. Originally, they were dispersed out around the lot differently, but then there was an amended lease that came to the council back in the 90s, and we kind of consolidated them all next to Pleasant Street because that was more, you know, in keeping with, you know, the corridor there. So, yeah, it's, they are required to do all the maintenance, all the plowing, all of everything. And again, it's private property. It's not... All we literally have is the land rights, similar to what we have in some ways with the Gothic Street deck on Police Station. Still state land, still state lot. We have a lease to build our deck over the top of it, and we are allowed to use the lower deck area, again, outside of the hours of...
Right.
After 6 o'clock, yeah. But it's state property, and in that case, we actually do maintain it, but obviously there's not a lot of snow when you're building this under the deck, so...
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I, first of all, I want to thank the mayor for fielding all of my questions over the last week. I, because I've been trying to, because I, like many people, you know, walked by there for years thinking, "Oh, that's a public parking lot. Look at the meters and the whole thing." And that it's taken several passes to, for me to fully get, you know, private property the way that service contracts are negotiated by the mayor's office. And that, you know, I think we've landed in a really good spot, that the city is no longer doing enforcement. We don't have to worry about any maintenance in the lot. There's guaranteed revenue. And that, you know, and that ultimately, the parking fees align with the parking fees we charge for our parking garage. So I mean, and that I think some people are upset because there was a lack of enforcement and oversight during the times where the city wasn't providing the enforcement. And that there was a perception that the lot was free parking. And that, and that I know for some people that has been a hardship. There's people who live at, live 155 that I'm, I've been reaching out to wayfinders, find out where those people are parking now. There was, I don't know, five or six people that were parking there. And I'd like to, you know, investigate ways for that to, for them to find a place to park at night. And that, you know, people were used to showing up and being able to sit and wait for trains, and that's no longer the case. But that also has to do that with that this is private property and they are, now have a system in place that aligns with, you know, our parking system. And so I am supportive of this now that I finally understand it.
I tried to point out to people too that, you know, if you go up and down the Vermont or line, there's not free parking provided in Hartford, there's not free parking provided in Haven, there's not free parking provided at Penn Station, there's not free parking in Greenfield, there's not, you know, so this is not like, we're not doing something radically that's different. And again, we don't even own a parking lot near the station. I mean, this was, this is their parking lot. So I just, I've always tried to just make sure people understand that in context. If you go to Union Station and want to take a train somewhere overnight, I mean, it'd be smarter to go park at MGM. But if you park at Union Station, I was just there for an event last week, and you have to pay for parking. So, yeah.
As you said, we don't own a lot next to the station, but we do own a garage very near the station. And we, it's, our garage is slightly, is .1 miles farther than the Union Station lot is from the Springfield Station. So it's very similar to many of the other train spots.
Exactly, yeah. So again, I think, you know, many people, you know, airports have the, you know, cellphone lots and other, you know, ways that, you know, if your train's running late, you say, you know, come get, you know, it hasn't arrived yet. I just dropped my daughter off at the train recently to go up to Berlin to visit a friend. And again, the train's running 20 minutes late, so you're going to, you know, maybe you're not going to go into the parking lot until you know that the train's going to pull in and then you pull up and pick them up. So, I mean, this is not an uncommon arrangement, so...
Counselor Nash.
Yeah, one more thing I want to add is that we're not voting on the right, on the rates or anything like that, that that is a service contract, you know, the mayor handled that piece, that what we're doing is, you know, aligning our ordinance with, you know, what we expect our enforcement officers to oversee.
Good point, yeah. Any other discussion on this ordinance? Hearing done. We have it on the floor?
Yes.
I sometimes lose track of these things. So...
Counselor Donald.
Yes.
Counselor Sharon.
Yes.
Counselor Darrell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, approved on first reading. Next, 19-140, an ordinance related to parking on Arnold Avenue. Motion to get this on the floor, please, for approval.
Move approval.
All right, made and seconded. Um, this is one of those things, best addressed with a map and a Jim Nash.
Hopefully, hopefully. Yeah, so, um, yeah, if you get the map up. So what you, there are four different ordinances here related to parking around Smith. They've been twice to the TPC, once where the TPC reviewed them and found them, um, to send them forward with a positive recommendation, and the second time to provide the public, particularly people at Smith, to show up and speak to these. And, um, when, at, uh, TPC the second time, um, we didn't have anybody show up, but we were hoping that somebody would be there with questions. Um, so I, okay.
I'm, I'll take over from here.
You'll take over?
Yeah.
So anyway, the, uh, to summarize what's going on, the first one has to do with Arnold Avenue, and, uh, that, uh, the, the, um, prohibition of, on parking on the south side of Arnold will stay in place. On the north side, um, the parking will be better delineated. If you look at the, the one on top, you can see that the, uh, that the allowed parking area goes all the way to the entrance to that parking lot. If you go back down on the screen, you can see that it delineates a parking zone that, so that people have visibility as they're going from Arnold and into that parking lot there. Um, the zone, so also, of the four, within the four pack, uh, ordinances, that we're creating long-term parking, ten-hour parking, um, that at twenty-five cents an hour, and also that people can park at these, uh, spaces with a permit that they can pick up at our parking office. Um, and, so that's, that's the story here. So these will become ten-hour parking spaces on Arnold. I guess we have to take these, should I just go through them all and then?
Well.
And, yeah, any questions about this one?
I would, actually, I would move them as a group.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Right.
Sir, second?
And that, that would be, by the way, uh, just for the record, item nineteen point one four oh, one four one, one four two, and one four three. And so my motion is to move those, those, one, two, three, four.
Second. That's been made and seconded?
So, take it from there.
Do you want to take over?
Okay, um, so what are we doing?
Uh, they've been taken as a group, the motion's been made and seconded, take them as a group.
All of them.
The four.
Parking work.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, so you've expanded the original motion, I guess?
Yeah.
Yes, I think it was a group.
It hasn't been.
Councillor Nash's narrative.
Up to nineteen one forty-three, uh, parking in West Street?
Yes.
Correct.
Um, anything?
We're still talking about it.
Oh, any further discussion on any of them, I guess? Councillor?
To hear about the others.
Did you want to?
About the others.
Councillor Nash? Talking about.
Oh, by all means.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have to vote on take them as a group, though?
We did.
Oh.
We don't have to. No, it's just, that's the motion.
We made the motion, we didn't.
Oh, I got it, all right. All right, um, any more questions about Arnold?
No.
Your picture.
Okay, let's go to Belmont. We get a. Okay, so again, uh, it's, it's much the same here, that we're cleaning up, uh, if you look at, on the left here, uh, that we, it was, you know, it's currently on-street parking, uh, no meters, you see a green spot there for some short-term parking, um, that the, the new ordinance, uh, cleans things up, lines up around where the parking can start and end, um, and that these will be long-term, ten-hour parking spaces at twenty-five cents an hour.
Now, you would suggest that you could get permits for these, but, uh, they're metered still.
They're metered, but any, any long-term parking, uh, you can get a, I think it's forty-five dollars, you can pick up a permit, um, and you can, they're identified by red caps, I've learned this in the last week. All right, the, any of the meters with the red caps, the, um, permits apply?
Like Trump, like Trump Bowl, there's a bunch off of State Street, I'm not in part of Smith, but there's the ten-hour.
All right, any more questions about these?
It's, I, I, who do I call? Councillor Shara, can I have your?
No, you, uh, you've taken back.
Thank you. Um, so, narrow, it's awfully narrow there, right? Is that one-way? That's not one-way there, is it?
It's Belmont, yeah, it is.
Belmont is.
Belmont's one-way.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not a problem, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Should we move on to the next one, please?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Elm Street. All right, this is, this is the big one. Um, there's a number, all right. Want to pull it up here? Get my map. All right, so, um, so there's a number of things on Elm Street here. First of all, uh, something, we're removing the overnight, uh, parking prohibition. Uh, for a number of spaces in this area, there was a prohibition, I think it was from twelve until six AM, um, so that would be removed. Uh, again, the spaces are going to be better delineated. Um, also, uh, the, there's been, uh, some rearrangement to better accommodate, uh, the bus stops, both on the north and south side here. Um, there's, uh, one, uh, the current ordinance has two handicap spaces, uh, near, where is it? Uh, Bedford, and that, um, the proposal is to split them up so that, you know, that we still have two handicap spaces in the same area, one is going to be near Bedford and the other is going up near Prospect. Um, let me see. The, and the last thing is, um, that we're extending the metered spaces, uh, past, uh, the, uh, the Smith College.
Campus?
Yes, the campus center. It'll end, it'll extend up to, I think it's called College Lane, yes. And, um, so that those spaces currently are not metered, and they would be metered, again with the, the ten-hour parking.
Quick question. You say better delineated, do you mean they're going to be line-stripped or delineated in terms of explanation of how, what the, the parking rules are for a particular space?
So that, part of what's been going on is that the, um, the actual parking zones in many of these cases are not lined up with the existing conditions. So we saw that, I think, on Belmont, where, um, that, uh, that the, you know, people were, the, the parking zone extended right up to the entrance to a parking lot. So, uh, those are the types of things that are going on here, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, maybe you can help me out, that these will be line-stripped as well, as, as.
If they're metered spaces, they'll be. Yeah.
You're adding seven additional on, on, for, by the student center, you're adding seven additional metered parking spaces, by my count, on that.
Yeah, it looks right, or eight. One, two, three, four, eight.
Eight?
Yes.
Is that pretty much what happens along there? Smith College employees who have parked there in the morning anyway, and like, are there?
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Councillor Nash for a level of appeal with which he has, he has looked into this. Uh, I actually think it's a very well-thought-through series of proposals. And I have, uh, reached out to tenants, to Smith folks in the area, and have encountered no opposition to this. The position of Smith is that they endeavor to have their staff, employees, students park in their, in their own facilities, in their garage, not on these, uh, not in these places. They have no objections whatsoever to, uh, the, the slightly different approach to delineating parking spaces and to metering them with, with, with long-term parking. Uh, so I, I really do think it's a very, a very sensible, uh, proposal that's not going, it, it, and it's actually going to, by my count, add, I, over forty, I, I believe, metered parking spaces, uh, in, in this little, little area of town. I think it makes sense all the way around.
Anything else on this one?
Um, I guess the last thing I'd like to say is thank the, the mayor's office and Lynn Simmons for all the work that they did pulling this together, and, um, yes, you can see it's pretty detailed. Oh, and then we had one more to go through, right?
Yeah.
West Street.
Yeah, West Street. Uh, West Street's a little more straightforward. Uh, so again, uh, adding, you know, meters, delineating the, the parking spaces, just to the north of this, um, the, the, the on-street parking is metered already, and just across the street from these spaces is where the, uh, the, the Smith College visitors' garage is. So it makes sense that, you know, that we should extend the, um, the metered parking further down West Street like this.
Great. Any questions on that one? Good. Any further discussion on any of these in the group? Perhaps it's time to vote on it. So, we have a roll call on these as a group.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Bidwell.
Yes.
Councillor Carney.
Yes.
Councillor White.
Yes.
Councillor Klein.
Yes.
Councillor LeBard.
Yes.
Councillor Murphy.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
And Councillor O'Donnell. Yes. So that, all those are approved in first reading.
Yep.
Finally, um, nineteen one four four, and ordinance relative, ordinance relative to stop sign on Hampton Avenue, excuse me. Uh, nineteen one four four, an ordinance relative to stop sign Hampton Avenue, first reading. Motion on this, please, for approval.
Some move.
Second.
So, simply this adds a stop sign on Hampton Avenue, uh, direction of travel is northeast at the intersection of Pleasant Street. Um, discussion, councillor Dwight?
I'm just gonna add to the comment that I had, legislative matters is, I'm, I have no problem approving this, although it seems redundant. Uh, you're required by state law, as you pull into it, uh, as you're an intersecting street, to stop, and everyone knows that. In fact, if you don't stop, there are consequences that are pretty clear to everybody, and I didn't realize this is an actual problem. I have no problem putting a stop sign there, it's just an opportunity for someone to put stickers on it at some point, but it, I, I get a little nervous when we start throwing stop signs and things. Former, uh, DPW director George Andrew Kiedis once actually made a very, uh, interesting point to me when I was arguing for signs at one point, he said, you, on your drive here, on your drive here, Bill. You, you pass no less than a hundred and fifty signs, can you name one of them? And I, no, I can't. And it's, but the point is, is when we, when you create a ubiquity of signs, it, it actually runs counter to the purpose that it's intended. I'm fine with this, he, but as I said, I defied, I don't understand a person who wouldn't stop there, and a stop sign, I don't think it'd make a difference to them one way or the other, but.
Councillor Murphy.
Is this one of the signs that's already there that just doesn't have an ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, right. Put councillor Dwight's speech in respect.
Yes, exactly.
It might be appropriate to develop a sticker of councillor Dwight, who's already an iconic figure.
Andre the Giant, they, they.
The only thing I would, I would just defend this stop sign is that we do get a lot of visitors who come in and out of the city and park in the garage, like, it's where our, it's where our garage is. So for people that know North Hampton, like, sure, you'd be stupid to, like, just gun it out of that street, but, um, as the, as the police have told us, um, a lot of out-of-panners, even on Fulton, like, just think, oh, I'm just gonna drive right out of here.
I actually agree with that. I think if, if you're there and you try to look left, which you're not allowed to turn left.
Right.
Like, it's hard to see the cars coming in, because the other cars block it. So I, I actually think, yeah, that makes sense, if you're.
But I mean, if the sign's already there, early doses of an ordinance is supported.
Then again, like, I didn't even remember there was a stop sign there.
Exactly.
So there you go. Any other discussion? Uh, oh, yeah.
I just want to add that DPW has also added a directional arrow on the pavement to only go right, which, for most people, they don't see that no-left turn across the street on the utility pole, and, um, and I think it's a great addition along with the stop sign.
All righty.
Dress up.
So, we're getting punchy. Uh, any other discussion on this last and final ordinance? Okay, so let's, hearing done, let's have a roll call, please.
Councillor Bidwell.
Yes.
Councillor Carney.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.